This conference will now be recorded.
Of an accessory structure in the front setback from the required 20 feet to 10.2 feet in an RS4 zone. The hardship is being on a corner lot and undersized property.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Okay, and who is here to present the petition?
John Troverelli.
Okay, just your name, address, Mr. Troverelli, and then you can present it.
It's John Troverelli. I live at 1 Farm Hill Drive. I am representing my cousin, James Troverelli, on 10 Osborne Street, Stratford.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yes, we're looking to just shed on the side of the house. And we are... There is an existing shed that we plan on removing. And that's about it. We just... My uncle just passed away, and he has a couple of old cars that my cousin wants to hold on to. And, you know, he just needs a little more storage area. And because the lot is so small, we're just looking to, you know, put the shed there. It's on the side of the house on Osborne. There's... I believe there's plenty of room on that side there. But we just need the setbacks.
All right, thank you. Commissioners have any questions? Ms. Clary?
Yes, I'm wondering what the neighbors have said. But also, in a drive-by there today, I noticed directly across the street is a shed that's right up to the edge of property of the street. There is a fence around it, which, you know, covers the view of it somewhat. But have neighbors said anything?
No.
Tell us that later. No. We approached all the neighbors here, and they're all... My uncle and my cousin lived here for 35 years.
More than 50 years.
And we... For 50 years. And they approached all the neighbors, and they were all... None of them had any problems at all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Young?
Mary Young, for the record, thank you. Mr. Hibansky, I believe I heard the applicant inform us he's going to remove the existing shed and would like the proposed shed. Remind us all, if you could, what coverage does that end up putting him at?
Well, I don't have the calculation as to what it would be, since it wasn't originally proposed to have that second accessory structure removed. Let me see here. Give me a moment.
I'm glad you say that you're not quite sure, because I do try to do my homework, and I wasn't sure either. But I think you would agree with me that it's incumbent upon the applicant to inform us what coverage relief they're seeking before asking us to grant it. And I would shift the burden back to the applicant if they can supply that. Thank you.
Well, I believe it was... The variance was about 250 square feet, I think, is what were the coverage... Our variance were going to be without the shed being removed.
That is correct. And it would be approximately 32% with the shed, with the existing shed removed.
Thank you, Mr. Hibansky, and my thanks to the applicant. One more question, if I may. The staff report prepared by Mr. Hibansky, hopefully you saw, dated March 24th, describes the attached garage, which frequently supplies storage opportunities. Is it my understanding that that is insufficient, hence your need for a larger shed than exists currently?
Correct. It's only a two-car garage, and it does... The garage does not go back far enough to allow for any room for any lawn mowers or any yard equipment without, you know, affecting the integrity of scratching up the cars. It's only about... I believe it's only 21 feet deep. So by the time you put a lawnmower and, you know, garden tools and et cetera, it's... You know, we... They do it... They have two cars, and they are, you know, classic cars. So again, like I said, my uncle had passed away, and they left the cars to my cousin. And they hold value to him, and he really doesn't want to get rid of them. But with the price of storage and everything else, he'd really like to keep them there and just be able to have the accessory shed for household tools and lawn mowers and et cetera.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this petition? Any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close this petition, move on to the next one.
Mr. Chairman, would you... This is Jay Hibansky. Would you like to see if there's anyone in the audience to speak in favor or opposition?
Oh, yes, since I don't see many people. But yeah. Does anyone here wish to speak in favor of this petition on Osborne Street? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Mr. Knott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I happen to know the applicant, and I knew his father. And I can tell you that what Mr. Troverelli has just explained to you is, in fact, the truth. And I would request support for this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the petition?
Mary Young.
Judy Clary.
Second by Judy Clary.
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Mr. Force, if you'd read number two, Husatonic Avenue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but no, I will not. I'm recusing myself as an adjacent property owner, so I'm not saying I'm not...
Mr. Elder?
Hey, Joe. Husatonic Avenue Extension. Petition of Ian and Shawna Gillespie, seeking a site plan review and variance to waive the requirement setback from a coastal resource from 75 feet to zero feet per 3.14 to construct an in-ground swimming pool incidental to a single-family dwelling. Hardship. The pre-existing location of the house within the required 75.0 setback necessitates the location of a pool within the same setback. A coastal site plan review has also been submitted with this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, before we go on, I just want to make it clear that there are only four commissioners sitting on this petition instead of the usual five. Does the petitioner want to continue with only four commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Barry Knott, on behalf of the petitioner. What I would like to do now is ask that this application be passed until after the last public hearing tonight, in case Ms. Streets shows up, in which case we would have five commissioners. If it turns out we do not have five commissioners, we will not go forward tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, so just give me a motion, somebody, to move Husatonic Avenue to the bottom of the agenda and move Broadridge Avenue up to number two.
Commissioner Elder, I make a motion that we move this particular petition to the bottom of the order. And what else am I supposed to say?
May move number three up to number two.
I'll move number three up to number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Motion.
There's a second by Mary Young. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Ms. Young, if you would read the Broadridge Avenue petition?
Thank you. 1734 Broadridge Avenue, petition of Christian Lang, seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 4-2 to expand the maximum building coverage from 25% to 41.22% to legalize the construction of a rear deck incidental to a single-family dwelling. Hardship builder told applicant they filed for permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, I... Good evening. My name is Christian Lang.
Okay, just your address. It's your address, Mr. Lang, and you can continue.
The address is 1734 Broadridge Avenue in Stratford, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
So what happened is, basically, in 2017, we had a builder come in, build our deck in the back, and enclose the existing porch, which cost us $42,000. And in the contract, there was $2,000 of the survey, $550 for a permit. We put the house on the market in February, and our agent informed us that the house had no permit for the back deck. So we basically are selling the house and closing next week, and we are very sorry that happened. We did not know, especially for that amount of money we paid for the deck. We, you know, would expect the builder to pull a permit. We contacted the builder, and of course, he's not getting back to us. So my point is that we are very sorry for what happened, and I wish, you know, it would not have happened, and we wouldn't be here today. But on a good note, the house did assess $410,000 without any comparable in the area, and the bank assessment took it too. So it's a good thing for the town. The rent list will increase hopefully for this. But, yeah, we are really, really sorry to you about... To let you know that happened.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mary Young, for the record. Mr. Lang, highly sympathetic to the situation you find yourself in. No one would want that upon their friends or enemies, for that matter. I wonder if you had a chance to review Jay Hibansky's March 24th staff report to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
In my view, I think he offers you some language that you may want to make yours with respect to the hardship argument that you are making. You heard me recite from our agenda, the hardship relative to the contractor who did you wrong. That may be factually accurate, and I'm not an attorney, but I don't think that meets the definition of illegal hardship that's related to the land, not the people who affect the land. Mr. Hibansky, in the third paragraph of his staff report, describes to us, "The subject parcel is unusually small and does not meet the lot with requirements." That might prompt you to make those your words. Thank you.
Yes, so I would like to say that our property, I think in RS4 zone, it's supposed to be 7,000 square foot, and our property is just 4,000 square foot, which makes it unusually small, the property. Even with... And when we bought the house, the house was already... The normal house itself was already over 30% coverage, which I calculated. And the setbacks are still good. We are still having the right setbacks with the deck, so that would not, you know, sacrifice anything or would be a bad thing.
Any other commissioners wish to ask questions? Hearing none. Judy, Ms. Clary, want to ask a question? You're just hiding. All right. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of this petition? Once again, anyone wants to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed to the petition on Broadridge Avenue? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the petition?
Mary Young, motion to close.
All right, Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Elder.
Mr. Elder, second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Carried unanimously. Back to Husatonic Avenue. We still only have four commissioners. Mr. Knott, what's your pleasure?
I'm sorry. Can I interrupt? My apologies, Mr. Chairman and Attorney Knott. I've been texting Annette Streets, asking, "Are you coming?" So I just wanted to share what I've learned. She's having internet problems. She has not given up. I don't know if you want to take a five-minute break, and we can see if she's able to overcome it so that Attorney Knott can make an informed decision. It's up to the chairman. Thank you.
That would be great, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll recess this meeting for five minutes.
Hi, everyone. This is Jay. The meeting is going to keep recording. If I stop recording, it ends the meeting. So just mute yourself and turn off your cameras. It'll still be live.
Jay, if you have your cell phone on, I'll text you whatever I learned from Annette.
Great, thank you. I just spoke with Annette. She's going to call in in a matter of minutes. She was trying to get the video working, but she'll call in momentarily.
All right, Jay, thanks. I see Annette has arrived. Yeah, I think she's just turning on her microphone. I'm going to get her, hopefully, set up.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, and I'm glad you could make it.
So sorry for the delay.
That's all right. It's not your fault. Blame the internet company.
Yeah.
All right, we're all set. I'll call the meeting back to order at 7:28, and ask somebody to read the Husatonic Avenue Extension into the record. Mary Young can read it again, since she does... That's a good job of reading.
Thank you, Mary Young. 812 Husatonic Avenue Extension, petition of Ian and Shawna Gillespie, seeking a site plan review and variance to waive the required setback from a coastal resource from 75 feet to zero feet per Section 3.14 to construct an in-ground swimming pool incidental to a single-family dwelling. Hardship. The pre-existing location of the house within the required 75-foot setback necessitates the location of a pool within the same setback. Asterix. A coastal site plan review has also been submitted with the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Knott?
Good evening, ladies, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hibansky. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of Ian and Shawna Gillespie, who own the property at 812 Husatonic Avenue Extension, which is the subject of this petition. At this time, I want to make reference to the fact that the certificates of mailing have previously been sent to Jay and are already part of the record, and I would ask Jay to allow me to share my screen with you at this time. Thank you. This is the petition for a variance of Section 3.14 of the zoning regulation, which prohibits construction activity within 75 feet of a tidal wetland. I have also submitted a coastal area management application because the property is located within a coastal area. Please consider my comments and exhibits to be in support of both applications simultaneously. I want to make reference to Exhibits 1 through 9, which are photographs of the subject premises. Exhibit 1 is a photo of the applicant's house from the front at 812 Husatonic Avenue Extension. Exhibit 2... Let me explain this property. This is a little four-lot subdivision that... Where there are four houses that were constructed probably 15 years ago, and they are located on the water. Exhibit 2 is a photograph of my client's property, and then to the left of it is another house that is part of that same four-lot subdivision. Exhibit 3 are the other two houses that are part of the same subdivision. The yellow house, which has got the white car in front of it, is directly next door to my client's property. Exhibit 4 is a view of the Husatonic River from the rear of my client's property. As you can see, the rear yard goes out to approximately where that tree is located, and then the elevation of the property drops off 4, 5, 6 feet approximately to a marsh area that is located on the riverside of my client's backyard. Now, I want to show you in a minute the site plan, and you'll see that my client actually owns a substantial portion of that marsh area, which is interesting. However, that property is not practically usable. Exhibit 5 is a photograph towards the Washington Bridge, north of my client's property. Once again, you can see the elevation of the lots drop off as you get towards the marsh area. Exhibit 6 is a photo looking south on the Husatonic Avenue, the next-door neighbor's backyard, various docks that go out into the river, et cetera. Exhibit 7 is a photo looking south. This is a close-up of the change in elevation between my client's backyard and the marsh area. Exhibit A is a photo looking northward. Once again, you can see the change in elevation from my client's backyard to the marsh. And Exhibit 9 is the photo of the back of my back house, taken from the river, and that is Mrs. Gillespie, sitting in... On the deck in her backyard. Now, Exhibit 10 is a site plan of the property, showing the proposed use, including the installation of a 20-foot by 40-foot swimming pool, which is the subject of tonight's application. As you can see from this exhibit, the property contains 14,910 square feet. It is located in RS4 zone, which requires a minimum lot square footage of 7,500 square feet. Now, I have highlighted on Exhibit 10, in blue, the location of the proposed pool, and I've highlighted in orange the 38-foot distance between the location of the pool and the top of the tidal wetlands located near the water, which I have highlighted in yellow. So the yellow crooked line that runs across the back of the property is the top of the marsh, as you saw in those previous photographs. The orange line that runs from the pool to the top of the marsh shows the distance between the pool and the top of the marsh, which is 38 feet. As you can see from this area of the site plan, a substantial portion of my client's property lies between the edge of the tidal wetlands and the water. So if you look to the right of that jagged yellow line, that is part of my client's property, which is located at an elevation lower than the backyard, which is essentially marshland and unusable. As I indicated, the change in elevation is approximately 5 feet, as you can see from the previous photos I showed you, Exhibits 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. I have also highlighted in green the 75-foot setback from tidal wetlands, as set forth in Section 3.14 of the zoning regulations. As you can see from the location of the 75-foot setback, the deck and a small portion of the house have already been constructed within the 75-foot setback, and it would be impossible for the property owner to construct a pool on this property without a variance of Section 3.14. Now, in February, I represented the owner of a piece of property at 1203 Prospect Drive, Stratford, St. Drive, Stratford, same kind of an application was for a swimming pool. Now, that guy is in the swimming pool business, and I mentioned that at the hearing. And he advised me in preparation for that hearing that the size of the typical swimming pool in this area is 18 feet by 36 or 20 feet by 40 feet. As you can see, my client was initially proposing a swimming pool 20 feet by 40 feet in size, and that's what's shown on the site plan, the blue area. In deference to the 75-foot setback issue, my client is modifying that proposal and is now proposing a much smaller pool, 16 feet by 32 feet, in lieu of the 20-foot by 40-foot pool shown on the site plan. This modification will pull the proposed activity an additional four feet away from the tidal wetlands. Now, as indicated initially, we also submitted a CAMA application with the application for variance. In that regard, I sent a letter on March 1st to John Goucher of the Connecticut DEP, in which I closed the copy of the variance and CAMA applications and all supporting documents. Now, exhibit 11 is a copy of the DEP comments on this application, and I've highlighted in yellow the significant portion of this letter in which Ms. Ballant, a senior coastal planner in the Long Island and Water Resources Division, recommends that 10-foot to 20-foot wide native non-invasive planting of shrubs to be placed along the top of the slope in the yard in an effort to minimize potential adverse resource and water quality impacts. And my client agrees to a stipulation to this effect regarding this application. And the location of this planting, by the way, would be where you see the change in elevation between the marsh area and my client's backyard. Now, exhibit 12 is a Google Earth aerial photo of my client's property, and as you look at this photograph, right where the word "avenue" is set forth on the roof of one of those buildings, the building that's got avenue on it is my client's property. As you can see from this photograph, the proximity of the top of the wetlands to his house leaves very little room for the installation of a swimming pool within the 75-foot setback. As you can also see from this photograph, the proposed location of the pool is as far away from the water as is possible. Most importantly, because of the location of the top of the wetlands between the proposed location of the pool and the water, there will be no concern about contamination to the waters of Long Island Sound as a result of erosion or runoff from the pool installation. Now, exhibits 13, 14, 15, and 16 are photographs of other houses in Stratford that have pools in their backyard. These happen to be located on Prospect Drive and Bayview Boulevard and on Ocean Avenue. These are photographs of pools, of a property where pools have been installed within 75-foot setback. I recognize that you are not bound by the approval of other applications of a similar type, and that each application has to be decided on its own merits. However, I submit these photographs to you for informational purposes only, and I believe that given the location of the tidal wetlands and the change in elevation between my client's yard and the water, there is adequate justification to approve this application. Now, I want to discuss Jay's administrative comments. In his comments, he points out that in 2004, variances of lot width and setback from tidal wetlands, section 3.14, same one we're here on tonight, were approved by the ZBA in order to construct this house. He also asked me to inquire of the applicant as to what alternatives were explored in the development of our plan. And as I indicated to you a few minutes ago, my client evaluated alternatives regarding the size of the pool and has chosen to reduce the size of the pool from 20 feet by 40 feet to 16 feet by 32 feet. They also asked how the pool will be drained, and the pool will be drained into the river. However, that cannot be done without a state of Connecticut DEEP discharge permit, which must be applied for by the property owner. That permit requires that no chlorine exists in any water when it is discharged. I learned today that chlorine dissipates within pool water within three or four days after the last chlorine is added to the water. Therefore, what happens in these situations, the property owner stops putting chlorine in the water, waits three or four days, and then has authority from DEEP to discharge into the river. I also learned today that the chlorine level in a typical Connecticut swimming pool is less than the chlorine in your tap water. Therefore, there will be no harmful discharge into the river from this or any other pool which has a discharge permit from the state of Connecticut. Finally, Jay indicates in his comments that it appears as though the current circumstances would qualify as legitimate hardship under section 8.6 of the statutes. As I indicated in my application, the pre-existing location of the house within the required 75-foot setback necessitates the location of a pool within the same setback, thereby creating hardship. There is no place else for the pool to go on this property. And now with the modification in size of the pool from 20 feet wide to 16 feet wide, this pool is going to be located 42 feet from the wetlands instead of 38, and approximately 79 feet from the edge of the river instead of 75. And that completes my presentation. Mr. Chairman, we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Knott. Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mary Young, for the record. Attorney Knott, I think you made the right decision to wait for Ms. Streets to join so you wouldn't have to rely upon a unanimous decision. We take to these meetings our experience and try to apply it and learn from the applicants what they think we should know for their respective cases. For full transparency, my experience has not been fabulous with respect to property owners being able to successfully maintain the vegetative buffers as recommended by DEEP, and my experience also has not been fabulous with respect to change in ownership. I will give the benefit of the doubt that the Gillespies would follow everything and all the guidance Attorney Knott offered with respect to chlorine disposal, but I'm not, there's no guarantee that the next owner will be studious or a good steward. And I was impressed by the aerial photo of the Gillespie's property that I didn't see anyone else on the street with a pool next door. You had to go to Prospect to find a scenario like that. So I'm not sure I have a question, but I want to commend the Gillespies and Attorney Knott for being so responsive so quickly to the 11th hour receipt of comments from DEEP. As I think we all learned today, John Goucher is not the one who you need to email or write to. He no longer is responsible for Stratford's referrals. Now we know who does. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Knott?
With respect to swimming pool in the immediate area, you are correct. There is not another swimming pool in the immediate area. However, there is a patio directly next door, which is located within the 75-foot setback.
Ms. Clary?
This is Judy Clary. My question is, you get a real good storm coming through. Nothing's gonna, that water's in the environment.
Well, I mean, the edge of the river is probably 150 feet from the location of the elevation change in my client's backyard, and the elevation change is at least five feet high.
I'm talking about high winds. I was there. I went to the street. It's so small. I can't even see how someone would, the land is inherently unstable because of the distance to the water. I, it just seems like it would be unsafe to me. That's it.
Attorney Knott, have a response?
Well, I mean, that's quite a statement. I don't know how you can conclude that. There certainly is no technical evidence to support the instability of the land. The tree that you're looking at in this photograph has probably been there 250 years, growing at the elevation shown in this photograph.
250?
Look at the size of the tree. It's probably got a four-foot circumference, or diameter, rather.
Can you put that picture up again? This is Judy Clary.
It's there right now. I'm talking about this tree here.
I can't see it.
You see exhibit four that's on the screen?
Nope.
You see exhibit five that's on the screen?
Nope. I saw the first, I'm losing battery. I saw the first two pictures, and after that, nothing came up, at least on my screen.
Oh, well, the tree I'm talking about is this tree right here on exhibit five, and same tree is shown on exhibit four. So it's a very large tree.
Anyone, any other commissioners have any questions of Attorney Knott? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Audience, there is no audience. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
While I'm recusing myself on the petition, I am not recusing myself as an adjacent property owner, and as such, I'm going to speak in favor of this petition. I have lived in this neighborhood for longer than I care to remember, 58 years. I am very familiar with the property. I think Mr. Knott's being conservative when he's saying that the drop-off is five feet. I think it's more closer to 10 to 15 feet. I know there was some inadvertent backfilling that was done during the time of construction. The actual permits, I recall when the permits were posed for this property, it was 2004, but the actual construction, because of economic situations, did not occur until 2015, which means that these properties have only been available to the general public for maybe the last five or six years. The fact that none of the other property owners adjacent have put in a pool should not be held against current property owner. Pools are not cheap. Some of these properties have already turned over once in terms of ownership in the previous six years. With regards to soil erosion and damage, the most horrific storm that has hit the area had absolutely zero impact on this property, including the fact that there was no erosion on the trees. There was nothing that fell into the tidal wetlands as a result of soil erosion. It is not subject to wave action. It is not subject to flooding. While FEMA may consider the area a flood zone for the flood map, in my opinion, and having resided on this street, I'm at a lower elevation and have a more direct access to the river, and I've never had water on my property. So I am less concerned about the fact that there might be any structural degradation from that standpoint. Had there been a concern for structural degradation of the embankment at the time when this original application was approved in terms of the structures to be built, a retaining wall would have been required by the zoning department and by the building department, and neither of which were required. So it is their estimation that geological surveys that were provided to the town at that time indicated that the property could hold a structure the size of these houses, there are four in this subdivision, and any pertinent structures that are placed on top of it. I think that the fact that this pool would not face the street whatsoever would cause no undue harm or detriment to the adjacent neighbors. I am in the neighborhood. I do not have a lot, unfortunately, I do not have a lot the size of Mr. Gillespie. I envy him for having such a lot that size. And I see absolutely no reason why this commission should not approve the installation of a pool in the location that Mr. Gillespie has suggested. And as an adjacent property owner and the only one who's taken the time to respond to Mr. Knott's letter informing us of this application, even if I was not required to be at this meeting, I would still have come out in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Anyone wish to speak? I don't know if I was unmuted or not. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition one more time? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Oh, Ms. Young?
Mary Young, for the records, forgive me if I'm out of order at this point in speaking, but I just wanted to offer my thanks to Mr. Forrester for going on the record and giving his point of view and his perspective as the adjacent property owner. That carries a lot of weight for me, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the petition?
Oh, move. This is Annette Streets.
Ms. Streets makes a motion, seconded by Ms. Clary in the discussion on approving, closing it. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The public portion, closing the public portion of the meeting. Entertained a motion?
Mary Young, most of the public portion.
Move by Mary Young, seconded by Lorenzo Elder. Alls in favor? Any discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Ford opposed, carried unanimously. All right, we'll take a 30-second break before we go into the administrative session. When we go into administrative session, we're going to take these the same orders they were heard, which means Husatonic Avenue moved down to number three and Broadridge Avenue will move up to number two. But that said, we can begin the administrative session. What's your pleasure on the first petition, which is Osborne Street? Motion for discussion, motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Judy Clary.
Motion to approve by Judy Clary is our second.
Mary Young to take it off the table, and then I'll second Judy's motion.
Okay, so Judy?
Take them.
There we go. We're all set. Judy taking it off the table, right?
Correct.
To approve. Mary seconded the motion to take it off the table and the motion to approve. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
I need the hardship identified as part of the motion.
Ms. Clary?
What?
Mary Young, I was recommending that before I vote, I need to know what the motion is inclusive of the hardship for which we are relying upon.
Mr. Chairman?
Judy would be being on a corner lot, you could say, in an undersized property, if you want.
Yes. It's on the corner. It's an undersized lot, and it's certainly in character with that neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
Point of clarification. Are we voting to take it off the table, or are we actually voting on the motion?
Well, if you were listening, we're voting to take it off the table, and then we're voting on a motion. We'll do both at once.
Well, I was trying to listen, sir.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion on the approval?
Mary Young? Come on. My apologies. Mr. Forrester, go ahead.
Well, I have a question. Before we even get to the point of voting on this motion, there's a spelling error in the name of the petitioner. I want to ask the town attorney, Mr. Florrick, whether or not that's a fatal flaw in the application or not.
Mr. Flor, could you answer the question, Judy?
I can't say I've ever seen anything like that in my experience, but... I, I can't say I've ever seen anything like that in my experience, but which one is this? Is this Broadridge or Osborne?
Osborne.
I think, I think as long as the neighbors did receive notice of the pendency of this zoning variance application, I don't think that's a fatal flaw. Kind of a unique issue, though. I haven't seen it before. I would lean towards saying that it is not a fatal flaw.
Well, Osborne Street is still Osborne Street, so.
Yeah, does it have the right address? I'm sorry. I'm trying to look it up right now.
Yes, it does.
Osborne Street. Okay.
Yes. Well, Jay, it's the correct address, right?
The address is correct. This is Jay Hibansky, and case law that I've seen, because this has happened before in the past with a a minor, a typo, is law, the, the point of the the legal notice is to make neighbors aware of what is happening on the property, such as what variance they're going for and what the address is, and as long as those are correct, case law that I have read shows that that is, that is not fatal to the application, but I defer to the town attorney.
Actually, Jay, Jay and I use a lot of the same legal resources. Jay has them in his office, so he doesn't have to call me or another attorney every time he has a question, but, you know, that you mentioned to Jay, I think you're right. There is case law that says the purpose of the notice is to give you the address, what the nature of the variance is, and I think if, if that's all correct on what was sent out to the neighbors, as is required, then I think you're good here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Flor. All right, what we'll do is just to keep it straight, too, for our secretary. We'll vote first on Ms. Clary's motion to take it off the table, and Mary Young second, and Mary, you have something to say?
Forgive my ignorance. So what is the misspelling? What should it have said?
The gentleman's name is spelled as Valley rather than Trow Valley. There's an A instead of an O, that's all, but it's just a technical, a technical error.
Thank you. And yes, one more thing. If Ms. Clary can stand it, I don't mean to be a pest. Did her motion include the capturing the applicant's offer to remove the existing shed, so that we're only left with one shed as offered by the applicant?
I think it'd have to, as amendment. Ms. Young?
When we get to that, that would be my suggestion. I'm offering a friendly amendment to Ms. Clary's motion once she's allowed to make it again.
Okay. All right, we're going to vote now on taking it off the table. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it's off the table. Judy, if you restate your motion and include, if you would like, what Ms. Young has offered?
I move that 10 Osborne Street be allowed to build this storage unit with the caveat of taking the old one out.
Is there a second? Ms. Young?
I second the motion with the hardship being the corner lot and undersized property.
That's why we have you do it.
Thank you. Any, any more discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. Clary?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is approved. All right, now we're going to go down to the Broadridge Avenue. What's your pleasure? Take it off the table?
Mary Young, motion to take it off the table.
Motion by Ms. Young is our second, seconded by Mr. Elder. Discussion on the motion to take it off the table. Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried unanimously. It's off the table. What is your pleasure?
That's a tough one. Mary Young, if I can just offer some discussion?
Just make a motion. Most to discuss that we should have a motion and a second.
Motion to discuss, Mary Young.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Clary. Young? You're on.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, since we had multiple cases tonight, the applicant did articulate language that came out of Jay Hibansky's staff report in support of his application that was tied to the property, not tied to the bad contractor, identifying that the subject parcel is unusually small and does not meet the lot with requirement. So should someone want to make a motion, my respectful recommendation would be to use that as the hardship, not the one offered by the applicant. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss the motion? Anyone want to make a motion to approve or disapprove the petition?
I make, Commissioner Elder, I make a motion that we approve the petition of 1734 Broadridge Avenue using the language that Ms. Young has just provided us with.
Thank God for Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Mary Young, I'll second Mr. Elder's motion.
Seconded by Mary Young. Is there a discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call on a motion to approve. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. Clary?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is granted. All right, last is the Husatonic Avenue. What is your pleasure to take it off the table?
Mary Young, motion to take it off the table.
Motion by Ms. Young, seconded by Judy Clary. Any discussion on a motion to take it off the table? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is now off the table. Ms. Streets, okay. Now a motion to either discuss or approve. Why don't we start with a motion to discuss, since that'll probably be a discussion?
Mary Young, motion to discuss.
Why, Ms. Young, is there a second? Second and eight Streets. Discussion on a motion to take it off the table. Wait a minute. Motion, discussion on the motion to discuss. Is there any comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's up. Question. Ms. Young?
Well, as you, Mary Young, for the record, as you heard me describe following Mr. Forrester's comments, wow, what a difference neighbors' feedback is. I know we all enjoy Attorney Knott's file folders and exhibits, but I think Mr. Forrester said it more eloquently with respect to understanding why I had not seen pools in other people's yards to date. That was, that was very responsive and identifying that we're not talking about the biggest pool ever, but something more petite in keeping with the property. And I was also persuaded by Attorney Knott that a vegetated buffer is something he has informed his client is something that needs maintenance and care. And like anyone who lives by the river, I'm going to have to assume and hope that they are going to be good stewards of the, of that river and leave a paper trail behind should they ever sell the property, so that the next owners will be equally involved in making sure the pool is emptied properly and the vegetated buffer is maintained. And it sounds like Mr. Forrester has lived there for many decades and will live longer perhaps than all the rest of us and can make sure that happens. I've done a full 180 since this hearing.
Gavin, did you hear that? Mary spoke when you lived with long and fruitful life. Anyone else wish to discuss? All right, hearing none, then we want to make a motion to approve.
Mary Young, I make a motion to approve with the conditions as offered by the applicant's attorney, Attorney Knott, that the vegetated buffer, as required by DEEP and their comments dated today, will be installed. I would ask, Jay Hibansky's staff can monitor that after each season to make sure it is still thriving, as sometimes, under the best efforts, not all salt-tolerant plants will survive, and so you have to make sure each year that they're still being maintained. And the hardship being that the pre-existing location of the house necessitates a location of a pool within the same setback as offered by Attorney Knott. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second to Ms. Young's motion to approve? Lorenzo, Mr. Elder seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion to approve Husatonic Ave. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Ms. Clary?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion, petition is granted. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda. You're welcome. The next thing on the agenda is the campsite plan review. Mr. Hibansky? It's for Husatonic Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we still have the approval of the minutes beforehand.
That's right, I went right by that. Sorry about that. Okay, approval of the minutes from March 2nd, 2020. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with the follow, with the following adjustment, or excuse me, the following amendment. We have Mr. Ticky listed as a member absent. Mr. Ticky is an alternate, not a member. Don't wish to confuse the public. So I make a motion to approve as amended.
Mary Young, I second Mr. Forrester's motion.
Discussion on Mr. Forrester's motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
Aye.
Now, Mr. Hibansky. The site plan review, Husatonic.
Okay, Jay Hibansky here, so let me pull out. So there was a lot of discussion already about the details of this coastal site plan review. Per the coastal, the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, this required a review and a referral to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. This property resides in an area that's defined as shorelands, which are upland areas at elevations in excess of the 100-year spill-water flood level and located within the coastal boundary. At the time of the drafting of my staff comments, we had received no commentary from from DEEP or the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission. As discussed by the applicant at the late this afternoon, we received some comments from DEEP. Part of that is because of restructuring. We referred all the restructuring of the organization up at DEEP. We have a new representative that revert, reviews these coastal site plan reviews. I, I agree with the condition of approval that was attached to the variance in coastal site plan review, which is essentially to comply with the comments given by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection as dated in their correspondence to me on April 6, 2021 at 4:04 PM. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Questions of Mr. Hibansky? Ms. Young?
I don't, Mary Young, for the record, I didn't get a chance to put it in the form of a question, Mr. Hibansky, but has your staff had experience with monitoring vegetated buffers? And/or might you gain some so that you can check in with this property owner after one year's growing season to see how they're doing and ask them to replace plants if they don't survive?
So, in all honesty, we, we are not monitoring the vegetative buffers that are approved as, as a condition or approved as part of projects. We respond to a complaint or if we're notified that a a condition of approval is not being maintained, we will go out and then enforce. I might make a suggestion as a, an additional condition to this approval that maybe after two years or five years, the applicant submit a report to add an informal report and photographs to show that the the, the tidal buffer is continuing to be maintained, and we can just keep those photographs in the file to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Jay, what do you recommend for a timeframe?
Well, I would say that most, most of the vegetation dies within the first year. So I would say after one year, after three years, and after five years, so maybe three, three updates, and then once, I think it's established after five years, you can hope that, that they're established and they'll be able to, to have some longevity to the site.
So you're saying submit photographs every, how many years?
At the one, three, and five-year increment?
Okay. But someone would like to make a motion on this kind of site plan review for Husatonic Avenue, including Mr. Hibansky's comments, one, three, and five?
Mary Young, for the record, I would like to make a motion to approve the campsite plan with the conditions of the vegetated buffer be installed, as recommended by DEEP and their April 6 comments, with the requirement that the property owner following one year of the completion of the project, submit a report to the Planning and Zoning Administrator identifying the conditions, and thereafter at the three- and five-year mark to do the same to confirm that they are still surviving, and if they are not, that they will replace in kind with other salt-tolerant species. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Young, go ahead, a second?
Annette Streets, second.
Second by Ms. Streets. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm recusing myself on this for the same reason as previous.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. All right, next, members' concerns and comments. Hearing none, no kidding. Go ahead, Ms. Young.
So, you know, at our last meeting, Attorney, as Attorney Knott was reminiscing, or maybe it wasn't the last one, but recently, we heard about the 75-foot setback of swimming pools to tidal wetlands, and we heard more about it this evening. If the board members are willing, I would love to draft a memo to the zoning commission. We can bring it back for further consideration by this board before it is sent to revisit that 75-foot setback requirement after some research is done about what do other communities do? Is that overly restrictive? Is it appropriate? You know, where are we with it? As perhaps many of you know, the pandemic has created a huge, underlined huge, demand for private swimming pools. People are, for obvious reasons, not as willing to perceive public pools to be a safer alternative for their children. So private pools are quite in demand. And I think if we can relieve ourselves of unnecessary requests for variances, that would be great. And so, again, my suggestion is, with others offering their opinion, to allow me to do some research, construct a memo to the zoning commission in anticipation of their consideration of a text amendment to reduce the setbacks of swimming pools to the tidal wetlands. And I thank you for your consideration.
You know what, why don't we just put it in the form of a motion, so it gets done? So, Ms. Young, you want to make that as a motion?
I make a motion that you allow me to draft a memo to the zoning commission to bring back for your consideration at the next meeting.
Motion by Ms. Young.
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets. Anyone, discussion on Mrs. Young's motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Anyone, any other concerns from any other members?
Mary Young, again, I drafted since our last meeting. Mr. Hibansky circulated to you, written by me on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Architectural Review Board. I hope some of you had a chance to look at it, because Mr. Hibansky has it in draft mode, ready to release upon approval by this board. Just to quickly summarize, I say, I think we would do better if we had their design recommendations in hand if and when we were to review sign applications asking for variances to the sign standards. I happen to know Jamie Milworth, chairman of the Architecture Review Board, and he was not opposed unofficially to such a suggestion. I think Stratford's in good hands under his leadership, and I think if we can expand their authority, or rather, expand their duties to include referrals from us, as they are authorized to do that under the town code, I think we would be better for it if and when we have sign applications in front of us in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, we can just direct Mr. Habansky just to forward this, well, our vote, Jay, you have comments?
Yes, Jay Habansky here, and I just wanted to add to that, that, you know, in some updates that I've had with the mayor, this had come up in some of our discussions, and she was very pleased to hear that the land use boards were using the architectural review board as a valuable tool and fully supports and encourages the ARB's review of signs. She also had asked that I work with the town council and to get this on the ordinance committee's agenda. Once the town council is, I'm sorry, once the ARB has come up with some design guidelines, and we can amend the ordinance for the ARB to make it clear that signs will now be part of the of their review, so just an update to tie it together, thank you.
Yeah, Jay, you can just forward that to them. At your earliest convenience, tomorrow morning.
Will do.
Anyone else, any other members' concerns or comments? All right, hearing none, are there other items? No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to, I just want to thank Mary Young for drafting this this really comprehensive memo, and I think that it will certainly enhance the work of this of this board as we consider any petitions that come before us that require signage, and so thank you, Mary, for all of your work.
Thank you, and I think, Mary, on behalf of the entire board, we thank you for doing that. Because you're the one with the most experience to do it anyway, so go ahead, Ms. Young.
My pleasure, I thank you for your support of my ideas.
All right, anyone else, before I move on, under concerns, comments, anyone want to comment on Mrs. Young's hard work? Okay. On the bylaw discussion, it's not going to be a discussion, we tried to do this last year before the pandemic, and then it kind of went by the wayside. I had some concerns about this. Mr. Florrick, our attorney Florrick also looked at him and had some concerns, so what I would like to do is essentially what I did last time, have Gavin Forrester head up the committee, put Mary Young on the committee along with Jay Habansky and Attorney Florrick as an advisor. I would like to have this done with the current board before a new board is seated, because the most experiences with this board, I don't want to change the bylaws with, because it will still be here, some of us, with new people coming on, so I'd like to get it done before November.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate you wanting to put me on this, once again, on this task, however, my personal commitment time has changed, I don't think I'd be available to chair the committee, so with all due respects, I would rather not commit to something where I have other time commitments that might get in the way.
Would you have time to be on the committee?
Yes, I could make time to be on the committee, but I don't feel appropriate that I.
Okay, then, Ms. Young, you are now the chairperson of the committee, are you comfortable with that?
I accept, and I'm glad Mr. Forrester will still weigh in, as he has a lot of experience to add, and I'm sorry, both he and I didn't get together sooner, the pandemic does provide so many inconveniences.
Yeah, it does.
One more member concern, I don't want us to forget, we heard Lorenzo Elder talk about when will he get back into the town hall meeting chambers, and I wonder if that's a conversation you want feedback on from the other members today, or you want to save that for another time?
Why are we waiting to see how Jay makes, Jay, when is this meeting going to take, what are you supposed to talk to the chairpeople, then you're going to talk to the mayor?
Yeah, so Jay Habansky here, I plan on setting up a meeting this month, probably second or third week of April with the chairs of our land use boards. After I get a chance to talk with the mayor and the town council and to kind of see what direction they're going to be going in, and then kind of relay that to our chairs, and then have an open discussion about how everyone feels and how what the comfort level is with meeting and and just kind of throw around some ideas, so.
So we'll continue to do this for next month at least, right?
As of now, that is the plan, and.
All right, put on the agenda for next month, members' concerns specifically about going back to in-person meetings?
Will do.
Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion, anything they'd like to add? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Elder makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Ms. Young, there's no discussion on a motion to adjourn, all's in favor?
Aye.
It's adjourned at 8:21, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, be safe, everybody.
Thank you, Lorenzo, we're always safe.